Good evening, this is the October sixth two thousand twenty one meeting of the planning board. Matt?
Okay, let me share my screen real quick. So, uh, the first item under recess matters is a final subdivision number eleven eighty. Old Dock Land Division in Kings Park.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard on this matter? Are there any questions from the board on this matter? Hearing none, I move that we recess item one as read.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? None, the motion is adopted.
Okay, the next item is uh permission to build on an unapproved uh paper street on Osgood Place in Smithtown. This was uh recessed from last hearing. So I guess before um if the board has any questions for the applicant, if the applicant wants to speak first. If not, uh, we can open it up to the public. Um, the way we can do this is at the bottom of your screen. You see a smiley face that says reactions. And you'll click uh raise hand. And then from there, the host of the meeting will ask you to unmute yourself and then you can speak. So take it away, Barbara.
Uh, so you're not going to read the whole memo, right, Matt?
Not again, no, we already did last.
Okay, thanks, Matt, appreciate it. Um, is there anyone here um uh virtually who would like to um be heard on this uh matter? Yes?
Can I have the black glasses on?
Alright, is there anyone representing the applicant? Who would like to be heard in this matter?
So you have to unmute.
Thank you, thank you.
You have to unmute Peter Rasso.
Hang on one second, sir. Mr. Rasso?
Yeah, yes, I'm trying to uh unmute, okay, okay, it's getting unmuted.
We can unmute.
I'm fine, yeah, I have nothing really to say, I'm just hoping that this thing can go through.
Okay, Mr. Rasso. Is there anyone present uh virtually? Who who would like to speak on this matter?
If you wanna raise your hand, we can see you on the video, or if you wanna hit the reactions button on the bottom, it'll hit raise. And you wanna start with Kathleen uh Bollin? Bowlin? Looks like there's two videos. I guess you can pick which one you want.
If anyone is going to be uh speaking virtually, please state your name and address for the record.
Do you wanna unmute?
Is there anybody who would wish to s- uh speak?
Kathy, did you see Kathy's iPhone?
Yes, I asked her to unmute.
Yes.
There we go, thank you.
Alright, uh, my name is Kathleen Scott. Fifty-two Signet Drive, Smithtown, New York. We had forwarded a letter to the board with regard to this. My husband and I have a few questions. We had asked about um
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, we were asking about the um why they were doing the driveway offset, not down the center of it. And why one driveway was being left instead of just centering it and creating one driveway, why they were having two driveways. We were asking also um the the responsibilities on the municipalities. You know, snow, garbage, recycle, repair, any liability issues. The other issue was because it's being offset. We have concerns that free the root structure. And again, we were uh also asking about the ownership of the property. And know what's going to happen in the future when we attempt to develop the three plots we have abutting in.
Mr. Colado, would you like to refer to the?
Um, yeah, usually responsibilities on the owners using it. The petitioner is proposing it to be on that side of the paper street, obviously because there's an existing driveway. I don't think there's a requirement that says it needs to be on center, but it's up to the board if they wanna keep it in the location or move it to the center. It's up to the board. I don't know if I, I guess, snow removal, again, whoever is using it. Probably is gonna be responsible for snow removal. Um, how it affects development of your property. Um, they are providing access to your property, so if anything, I think it's helping you because if they weren't doing it and you wanted to develop the property, then you would be constructing this road. That said, I think you had questions on your letter about uh abandoning in the remaining undeveloped paper road, I mean, if people want to abandon it. They can submit paperwork to do so if they they want to in the future.
And see, that's what confuses me is that I thought this was crown town property, correct? The road?
Uh, no, it's not necessarily the town's property.
It's not town property, it's just a, it's a paper street a- at this point, or a paper road, but it's not, it's not town property.
So then with the paper road, wouldn't it just go fifty percent to each property that abuts it?
If only if they abandoned it, they're not abandoning it, they're trying to put the road in.
Right, but the road is being offset, so the one property that already developed their driveway is uh they're maintaining and keeping a driveway. Then another
It's gonna be fifty, it's gonna be fifty feet.
Pardon me?
I- it's fifty feet, I mean, i- it's not gonna be any more than the fifty feet, it's offset because that's how we submitted, but uh it's not gonna affect your, I mean, it's another, probably, as I look at it, it probably improve your property, you'd have access to uh going up along your property if you wanted to put another, if you wanted to develop the property. But it's not gonna be the town's property, I mean, it's gonna be private, it's gonna be whoever uses, it's gonna have the liabilities, snow removal, uh repair in the road, putting the road in.
Uh, may I speak or?
Yes, you just gotta say your name.
Walter Scott, fifty-two Second Drive, Smithtown, New York. The way the proposal is it's a fifty foot um I guess right of way. But they're only proposing to put in a sixteen foot wide roadway with a seven inch curb on each side, so that comes out to seventeen foot, two inch roadway with the curbing. Now, that's gonna be offset. And only have a six inch di- a six foot difference between my property which should be the west side of Osgood Place. And the east side, the proposed roadway. There would be a vacant spot of twenty-six feet and eight inches. So my question is, why does one side of the roadway come within six feet of my property and the other side is a twenty-six foot, eight inch gap?
Well, as was just writing, it was read and at the last meeting. The road is positioned on the west side of the paper street in order to avoid an existing gravel driveway located in the paper street providing access to eighteen Waverly Avenue, so and in order to not touch that driveway, that's the reason why the road is gonna be positioned on uh that side of the uh of the road.
What?
Side of the vacant, the vacant, just the paper street. Does that answer your question?
But that driveway was constructed on the paper street? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
But whose, whose property is that?
The existing gravel driveway right now?
Yes.
Is owned by the person uh who lives at eighteen Waverly Avenue.
But it, but it's on the fifty foot right of way though, correct?
Yeah, it's within the, it's within the paper street.
So my question is, why wouldn't one driveway be suffice for each of the houses? Why wouldn't they be able to just center the 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 new proposed driveway, center it? Eighteen Waverly would still have access. And then the additional house that they're building behind eighteen Waverly would also have access. But it also doesn't offset it that in the future, if we develop the three plots on the other side of the road, there'd be no issue. Because if you're saying that eighteen Waverly that that other driveway is theirs. And now this other driveway, we have to ask permission to use. There's no more space for a third driveway for the three houses that he could build. Do you understand the concern?
Uh, Mr. Colado, can you explain uh the um Ms. Scott saying that they have to ask permission to use that new driver that's gonna be built, they don't have to ask permission, that's going to be part of the
Yeah, they're allowed, they're allowed to use it, the driveway for eighteen Waverly has been there for years, I looked at arrows from the sixties. Um, whether it's supposed to be there or not. I guess is uh, you know, a question that I don't have the answer to. Um, this road that he's petitioning to build, we have a record of it, it's an application. He's petitioning to build this road. So yes, other properties are allowed to use it. As I mentioned in my memo, I could, you have the one property that is on the corner of Waverly and Osgood, it probably makes sense to have that come off of Waverly. And then you have two parcels, an eight thousand and a four thousand square foot lot that could probably yield one house on it. If you want to get two, you're probably gonna need some substantial variances to do so. So I could see a maximum of two houses using this driveway, including the the petitioner's house.
So you're saying we, I'm sorry, I don't know which memo you just referenced because I didn't receive one?
Yeah, the one I read in in the last meetings.
Just wanna make sure it was another, so you're saying even though there's three plots of land on the other side of the roadway, you're saying that only one house could be built there?
Well, I'm looking at it, it's in, you're in R ten zoning, which requires ten thousand square feet, so you have a four thousand and an eight thousand. So you, as a right, you you need variances in order to build on those, so you'd have to apply for those, and I have no idea if that would be granted. You have the health department, I'm just going off of what is happening on the other side of the street, the guy took two six thousands and combined them for twelve thousand to meet the minimum lot area. So you might have to be doing the same exact thing. Just because you have a lot doesn't make it buildable.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just trying to figure out, because I just don't want to, you know, it's not that we even issue with them opening up the roadway, that's not a problem at all. It's just that by offsetting it, we have concerns, because as you say, you know, we're free to use this this new driveway that's there, but there's an existing one that has not been, that has not been the case.
Right.
You know, I just don't want future issue like that. So that's
There, there won't, because there's a, it's on the record and we conditioned it. Let me pull it up real quick. Well, they need to get a road opening permit from the highway department, so you have a permit for that. And I conditioned it that the the private road is not for exclusive use of any homeowner.
But yet, is that existing driveway that's already there now, is that exclusive?
That has, it's a, I think it was a dirt driveway that I guess over time, somebody put gravel on it and they've been using it as theirs, but there was no application like this for approval on that. I think that house is pretty old, it's probably one of the original homes in the neighborhood. And they probably just assumed it was their property.
Well, no, I believe they they always knew that it wasn't theirs. And that that's why they had an issue whenever anybody made any movement toward developing any of the properties behind it. But um
It's it's been known to people in the neighborhood since well, I was born in the sixties, that that was
A paper street.
Property, but that's where I grew up.
So now if another house, so even if it's one other house, you're saying that that the driveway that they're putting in. It it just, I guess the wording too is offsetting to us because it says driveway. And when you look at the plans, it's one driveway and another driveway. And I know that you're saying you're putting the conditions. But it almost looks like these are private issues for each of those property owners. Those driveways would be substantiated, it it wouldn't, as another residence being built, that's still going to be large enough and accommodate.
Yes.
That's what they're petitioning, if you wanna file, but you know, if you wanna work with them to make it larger, you can, it's, this is what's before the board, they can only review what's before them, so.
What happens in the in the future, uh uh if they put the sixteen foot wide roadway in? And say I build a house and I want, like a thirty foot roadway. This way, two cars will go down the street without
Similar to this, you petition the board.
So then you could proceed east of the roadway to add the extra sixteen feet or fourteen foot, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, if you wanted to propose that, the board would have to, you know, review it, like any other application.
And I, I'm sorry, I just wanted I know I'm going back, it just, I didn't have a good connection in the beginning, so I didn't really hear the beginning of what you were saying. But when we asked about ownership of the property, it's whoever's using it?
Yeah, it's not, the paper streets aren't really owned by individual, people have the right to use it, that about it.
So it's more of a right of way?
It's a right of way, yeah.
Yeah, the adjoining landowners.
Okay, so it's um, someone that's not a party to it wouldn't be able to use it?
I don't know, you're asking very specific questions, I'll I'll be honest, you're asking like very specific questions and I, I don't have the answer to all of them, I don't, you know.
We did reach out to to the town to find out, to the town attorney, just to ask, to find out these things, and they told us that uh you were the person that we had to get the answers from, so I'm not trying to be difficult, it was just that they stated that um, when we asked about the, like, the ownership of the property and everything and the liability, we were told that that you were where we would go to get those answers, so I'm I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Um, if I could jump in, uh, Mrs. Scott, uh, this is Peter Hans, I'm a planning director, uh, I'm in the same office as Matt. And what we have here is um, it's a two eighty A application. So yes, it is a paper street. And the, so what we're doing is, we're not saying that this is an abandonment because we know that there is potential future development on the west side of Osgood Place. So what the planning board has the authority to do is determine what is adequate public access to the proposed house and future proposed development. Um, so what Matt, I think, was trying to say is, it appears that there's several um uh vacant lots on the west side of Osgood Place that you own. And the um the closest street that's fronting on Waverly. If that were to be developed, that lot, it would likely have access directly out to Waverly with a driveway that could access out, you know, with the driveway of its own, straight out onto Waverly. Um, we know that the lots to the rear, I guess, which are listed as like lots number sixty-nine and seventy. If they're deemed to be buildable. They are not losing their road frontage because we're not abandoning this road. If we abandoned this road, you would we'd be setting you up for a problem because you would no longer have road frontage, and I think that's really what your uh concern here is that this, what's being proposed to be built is a sixteen foot wide, what we're calling a driveway. Um, that's what it has the appearance of, but technically, it's still a public road. And what the planning board and our highway department and why this thing's been reviewed, is they're saying that this sixteen foot, although it's not built to town standards, your typical thirty foot wide road with uh, you know, your your ten foot uh right of ways on the side. For two, possibly three homes, we've had other uh locations in town where this is kind of adequate. The alternative is, we abandon everything that's in there, we bring in a thirty foot wide dead end uh street. Uh, there's a lot more infrastructure, it alters the character of the area now to to bring in uh um you know, all this uh all this infrastructure, where whereas what we're saying here is, with a sixteen foot wide driveway albeit, it'll have to be shared. You know, this builder that's proposing right now, he's not gonna have exclusive rights to it. There's gonna have to be uh agreements put in place that ensure that whoever comes in in the future, if uh those lots are deemed to be buildable, they have the same rights and access to that. Most likely, it would require some sort of a property owners association uh with the two property owners, because somebody's gonna need to plow it, maintain it, that sort of thing, because in essence, over time, it's, it'll end up being like a private roadway. But you would still have rights to it, that's why we're not, we do not want to abandon it.
So even the section that is currently being used by eighteen Waverly is inclusive in what you just discussed? Not abandoned?
It's, it's not abandoned, um, it is showing up within the right of way. The uh difficulty, I guess, is that it's been there uh over fifty years and you know, the alternative I guess could be, you know, the town could require a full thirty foot wide roadway, which would mean removing uh uh the existing driveway and forcing uh you know, possibly a side entry garage, well, from their garage uh out onto the roadway. But again, we think that's gonna have greater effect on your neighborhood and change the character over there. As opposed to just throwing in what looks like another driveway that might serve two uh two homes. And again, we have many easements and shared accesses uh throughout the town of a similar situation.
Yeah, their their garage does face Osgood.
Yes. Yeah, I'm aware.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said the opposite, I apologize.
No.
Thank you for your explanation.
Sure.
Is there anyone else uh watching virtually who would like to speak on this matter?
Oh, I, this is Walter Scott again, I would just like to restate my um my request of having the roadway um centered, centered with an e- equal um right of way buffer, uh, not whatever you would call it, in each side of the uh proposed driveway. That's what I'm requesting.
We, uh, Madam Chair, we have a uh Jennifer Walber uh asking to speak. Maybe it's a Mr. Walber.
Okay, um, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Maurice Walber, I live at sixty-five Harvard Avenue in Smithtown. And I am, uh, Jennifer, this is her phone, I'm her husband. Just, uh, should I, can I speak now or?
Yes, please, yes, please.
Um, I'm uh actually uh I live just behind this lot. And when I bought the house, uh, I had no idea they were gonna be putting homes behind here, and just about every other person that lives around these empty lots uh is completely not interested in having any more homes squeezed back in. What kind of rights do we have?
This is an application brought to, uh, before us tonight for uh a person who is going, the applicant is going to be improving this lot and and he's going to be um building on this lot and and he, they own it, he owns it, and so he's bringing this application before us tonight, which is perfectly legal, and so we're going to move on that tonight.
So there's, there's nothing anybody else can do, when we bought our homes, we had a vision, we had, we had a site of woods. Now I gotta have somebody's house directly behind me.
In my backyard.
In my backyard when I had nothing.
Well, the 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 property belongs to somebody and they have a right to build on it. Because they do own it, just as the same as how your house was when, before you owned it, before it was built. So
My house was built in nineteen fifty-one and there wasn't, you know, we weren't trying to squeeze homes around here.
This is my uncle's house.
You, you know, it's like, every time there's an open piece of plot of land around here in Smithtown, you're trying to squeeze all of it. How how many houses do we need? How many cesspools do we need to go into groundwater? You know, the wild, we never had deers around here, you know why we have so many deers around here now is because you're building on all their land. They have nowhere to go.
Well, we're moving on this application tonight, sir.
Uh, Mr. Walber, uh, to try to answer your question a little bit, um the matter that's before the board tonight is not whether or not the lot is necessarily buildable. It's on what type uh type of access should be provided to these lots. Um, and really what the choice is that the, is whether or not to put in a full road or um to do something less substantial uh like a driveway. This is not, this is not like a subdivision application, it's not a uh, you know, that that would be subject to building permits and possibly uh approvals from the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Well, is that something that had already taken place?
Was the groundwater tested, the water table, was that all tested?
Uh, I'm not sure that it got to the building permit stage, but we're, we're looking at the two eighty A application, which is whether or not the uh access to the property is adequate and should it be a driveway or should it be a full-fledged thirty foot wide road? That's what the board's looking at. Um, from input from uh environmental department, highway, um, you know, they're recommending that this is the less intrusive as far as access to the site.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? And if so, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank Sissy's iPad.
We have a uh a Ronald Reed
Ronald Reed and then
To unmute.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Lisa and Ronald Reed, uh sixteen Waverly Avenue. Um, so we were at the last meeting um in person and I I I just basically wanna say, um, the way that this meeting tonight uh was brought about, I just want to express that I disagree with it. Um, we were under the impression that we would be going to the senior center and very last second today was when I found out it was a Zoom meeting. Um, and it seems as if the builder himself was the one that had to write it on on the sign. Um, I just think it's unprofessional or and not courteous to the neighbors around um how this meeting was brought to our attention, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Well, no, well, I mean, just, I mean, not, I I don't wanna just gloss over that, I mean, is is there a process in place for how these meetings are communicated to the surrounding neighbors? This was already, this was already posted once before, right, was it, Matt?
Yeah, there's a, it's pos- it's advertised in the the Smithtown News and there's a sign posted on the property.
But the sign on the property, um, it just said uh October sixth and the other information about it being Zoom um was only written apparently last night, so um
I mean, it said, it said a virtual meeting, virtual hearing on it. And then it said to contact the Smithtown Planning Department, and then we give you the information to get to the meeting.
Does it say virtual? I don't think it said virtual.
It says virtual.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll go back out and look at it, but I I definitely didn't see the word virtual on it.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have uh somebody with the name Sissy's iPad.
Hey, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Salvatore Motorano, I'm Sissy's husband, we're using our iPad. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody, um, I appreciate what you guys do, it's a hard job. And we'll give you a little background on Osgood Place. Um, the family has owned property in the area for over three generations. Many, many years ago. Property was thought to be developed off Osgood Place and the former administrations had done nothing but demand that Osgood Place be developed as a full road. By letting this builder do what he's doing, he's denying everybody access at the end of the road. And there would have been a house there and I would personally be living in it today. And we were denied because it was cost inhibited to put in a full road and utilities for one dwelling. So in the attempt to build one dwelling, this builder is circumventing what used to So in the attempt to build one dwelling, this builder is circumventing what used to be a given practice for his own financial gains and denying everybody else the same rights. I think you should deny this application and demand that he put in a full road like every other paper road in Smithtown have been done since I've been living in Smithtown since the early seventies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I see a Matt Madaros.
I think, I think the last, someone else wants to speak that, next to the gentleman that just spoke. Hold on.
Yeah, the last person.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Matt Madaros and I live at eighteen Waverly Avenue, Smithtown. So I'm going to Lisa and Ronnie's point two questions ago. There's a lot of confusion with the sign and the time and where this meeting was held. And it was just very, very interesting the way the town slash builder, you know, went about this. Last night, the builder came to change the sign himself right around dark, around six thirty, seven o'clock, right when it got dark. He did not park in front of the sign. He parked a little further down the street, walked the new sign. I asked him what he was doing. He told me not to worry about it. Information was wrong. I spoke to Matt earlier today. The original sign that went up had no time of any meeting on it. It just had a date. How's anyone supposed to know a time? I have a picture of it in my phone. Matt, I will email that to you later. Also, my other question is if this road is gonna be built, how is it going to be the allotted twenty-five feet from the road? My house is right on the paper road about three feet. So how's that gonna work?
Mr. Calada, can you answer that question?
Um, yeah. This one, we went to look at the site, I believe it was yesterday, we noticed that somebody wrote that the meeting was at the Senior Citizen Center on it. The town didn't do that and I don't think the applicant did it, so.
I don't think any of the neighbors did it either. So I don't know who did it. But also when the original sign went up, there was no time on it. How's anyone supposed to know what time this meeting is at? And why is the builder coming after dark? He told me he got the sign from the town. He sure didn't get the sign at six o'clock, seven, seven o'clock at night last night.
Yeah, the picture I took yesterday, it does show six P M.
That's twenty-four hours. What's the rule for notice on the meeting?
The sign that we, the one, the, the original sign, it says six P M. When I took a picture of it yesterday and then after I left. What's that? Probably in the afternoon.
Here, wonderful. What about this road driveway you guys wanna put about three feet from my house? How's that gonna work?
Let me, I'm Kathy Madaros. I also live at eighteen Waverly. The proposed driveway that was sixteen feet is very, it's not as obtrusive as the wider, whatever.
Thirty-foot road.
Thirty-foot road. That would be more of a very, first of all, you would have a thirty-foot road coming off of what's less than, I think, twenty to twenty-five feet. Waverly is not a very wide road. Also, if you do develop it that wide, my house will literally be five feet from that road. Is that allowed? Everybody else, all I hear is twenty-five feet setbacks, twenty-five feet, this twenty-five. You're talking now putting a road five feet from my house? If this changes.
By the way, we lived here thirty-two years. Just letting everyone know, thirty-two years.
When we moved in, that was a driveway. It had, it had gravel in it. It was, that is the only access to my garage, which was built in the early twenties. So this was all grandfathered in and that was my accessibility to my garage. It was already there when we bought the house. It's nothing that was created. It was there. And again, my house literally sits five feet from that road.
Yeah, that's why the petitioners proposing.
That's what we're saying, but.
But now everybody else is trying to say.
It's, 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 but we were saying instead of putting the thirty-foot wide road.
I, yes.
Exactly, but people, we're just stating our case. People are saying we want the, they want the paper road, the full paper road, thirty-foot road.
Yeah, that's, that's their comment.
Right. If anything is gonna be done, the sixteenth is.
It sounds like you guys already made the decision. I don't know why we even had the meeting. You guys are going through with it, so. That's wonderful.
All I'm stating is that a larger road coming off of small Waverly, it's five feet from my house then, that's, that can't be. Everybody else, you know, when you talk about twenty-five feet setback here, twenty-five, you're literally, Lynn, if you, if it changed, and I'm not saying that it is, I'm just trying to state the fact that this house sits five feet from the edge of Osgood Place. So there's no setback then. If it changed, that's.
This road is, this road is only gonna be sixteen feet wide, so it won't be near.
But other, other people have been speaking saying that it should be wider, it should be this, it should be that. I'm just.
So the application before us is for a sixteen-foot wide road. That's what's before us tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
In, in between, Matt, in between the two parcels on Waverly, the, the, the one in question with this, with this driveway and the one next to it, what's this, between those two houses?
One more time? Sorry.
You see what I'm saying?
Let me pull up the map one second.
Okay.
So, what's your question again, Tom? Sorry.
What's the difference between the, the, the spam on that, for that property line or that particular house, what the one with the driveway? What's the, the distance between there and the house next to it?
You mean lot sixty-three and sixty-two?
Uh, no, that, that, the one that's, has the, yes, yeah, the one with, the one with the driveway in question and the one next to it to the right.
Um, I mean, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Cause it looks tight already.
Yeah, it's a narrow lot. It's, it's an older home. It probably was built before zoning.
Matt, can I share a screen and maybe clarify a few things?
Yeah.
All right. Number one, I just wanted to go to the posting. So I was out at the site yesterday with one of the planners. And this is the sign that we saw. This was the sign that was provided by this office saying subdivision-related matter, a public hearing will be held by the planning board. A virtual public hearing will be held by the planning board on October sixth. Now, the reason we asked the, the applicant to go repost the sign is because apparently somebody in opposition to the proposal wrote all over the sign. They, they're the ones that incorrectly wrote, "Meeting held at the Senior Citizen Center." And obviously it wasn't the applicant because in the same writing, it's saying, "Make your vote heard and stop this." So I doubt the applicant was going to do that. So in an effort to avoid the confusion, we asked the applicant to come in here and basically repost the property with a new sign that was identical to the sign that was there. So that was the first question I just wanted to answer. The second part is, it's hard with the sign because this picture's really focused on the sign rather than the property. But you can see off to the left, you can see the gravel driveway and you can see the, the nice accessory structure. It's an old garage. It predates. What we're getting at is what we feel if you're going to have to provide access to undeveloped lots in the rear, that it's less obtrusive to do basically a sixteen-foot wide, what looks like an oversized driveway to the rear. This is what we're trying to do is protect the character, not force this driveway to be removed. And I think that's what the Madaros are concerned about because if we did a roadway right down the center of this grass lot, now that this driveway, all this gravel would have to be ripped up. The driveway would have to basically go right straight out to the driveway. And it would really have, I believe, a greater effect on that, on that house to the east lot. And that's really why we're trying to do what we feel is more in character of the area, less obtrusive, environmentally more friendly. It's a less pavement than a thirty-foot wide road and all the drainage that would be associated with it. I hope that helps answer some of the questions.
And just one, one of the note that he had on there, I mean, that the virtual meeting has been set for, I think, the past ten days. Was it, wasn't like it was done last minute?
It's been actually set for the last two weeks at least.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hans.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else present virtual that would like to speak?
Sissy wants to speak. Uh, let me ask.
Hi, good evening. And I appreciate everybody speaking. My name is Sissy Moturano. I grew up on Harvard Avenue. My family has been, has celebrated one hundred years in this town. And this house is, was here. I have family members that had wanted to build on Osgood Place. We were told that it's a private road. I keep hearing it being called a road, a driveway, a private road, a private driveway. We have family members that had wanted to build back there, wanted to build also as speculation and were told that they had to put in curbs, had to put in road, had to bring in water and electric. Now, what has changed that now instead of a private road for over one hundred years, this becomes a private road, a private driveway, a driveway? I mean, I have family members that still have a lot behind their home that they can put a T D R back on it and have it as a buildable lot again. So now they won't have access either. So what keeps changing with this? One hundred years and you decide, okay, we can put a driveway in. It's no longer a private road. And the town doesn't own the property now? Nobody pays taxes on this? My family paid taxes on their lot for more than fifty years, as long as I can remember. And the other lot that was just purchased, that was another family member. He probably bought that piece of property back in nineteen forty-something and paid taxes on it. So now you pay taxes on your property, you are now have a driveway there which it, because it's no longer a private road because now the road, somebody wants to make into a driveway going to their own property for speculation? This is just, I'm sorry, this is just, keeps changing, changing, changing.
I'll try to answer it a little bit. There is no, on a paper street, there is no ownership. So nobody does pay taxes on a paper street. It's just part of an old filed map. There is no ownership of it. The town doesn't even own it. It's just that it's set aside whenever that map was filed for roadway purposes. So even if it was a driveway, unless abandoned, we're still calling it public access. So that's what we're saying. If there's lots back there, you know, they're still entitled to access. Now, yes, what, what has changed? Yes. Part of it is highway superintendents, the highway superintendents, they change, they're elected. There's a different way of thinking. You know, does it make sense always to construct a full width and length? And there'd be a different way. You look at a typical subdivision from the fifties and sixties, you'd have a hundred-foot wide cul-de-sac at the end of the road. So there's a new approach that, that doesn't always make sense to blitz, you know, half a forest just to put in a turnaround for two.
Okay, but let me just say something. We have a house on Harvard Avenue that had to, had asked the town to abandon the road at one point and they were denied that. But if this is not a driveway and it's not a road and it's not a private road and it's not a private driveway, then is this a right of way? What is this? What is he proposing? A right of way? And then everybody else will have access as a right of way? Is it on their deed? I mean, whenever anybody needs it?
Yeah, that's what needs to, that's what needs to be established here because it, it's not being abandoned. So it will not be his only. He will need to continue to provide access to anybody that needs to do that. You, you talk about the utilities? Yeah, I mean, you still need to bring in water. You still need to bring in electric. Those things haven't gone away. I mean, they're still gonna wanna do that.
And drains and.
He proposed.
But like, like I said, I am very upset because morally and ethically, for one hundred years, it was one-way and now all of a sudden that gets tossed. So morally and ethically, where that just gets jumped out the window. Because one person wants to build, not for themselves, for speculation. So if I'm gonna build for speculation to add more taxes to the town base, then I can do whatever I want? That's what this all seems like it's already a given.
This is a paper road. This is a paper road.
Family members that approached the town before and were told, curbs, road, water.
Anyone who owns property off of this papers, paper street is welcome and entitled to make an application before this department. And they can also build whatever they wanna build and come out onto, to build a home and come out onto the street. It's going to be a right of way for the use of the people who live, who live, who will be living on, off of that private right of way. So if you, if someone, you own their property, you can make an application and you can also use that street. That's what this is about. That's what we're doing tonight.
So the property owners that, but this street here will have full access to this.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just, no, it's not, okay.
Anyone who owns property on, off that street is, is entirely welcome to bring an application before this board. Just to let you know that that's, that's exactly what this applicant is doing right now. They, they're just, you know, bringing this application that they're entitled to. And if you build a home back there, then you can use that private right of way also.
Madam Chair, there's a Jim Brennan asking to speak.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Jim Brennan. I live at twenty-five Waverly Avenue. I just wanna, I just wanted to call, I figured they're gonna be building it anyway. I agree with if the sixteen-foot, I would hate to see that the people that have lived at eighteen, the Madaros, would have their driveway that's been used for so many years. I've been here over thirty years as well. So I mean, I assume it's gonna be done anyway, that sixteen-foot. I, at least that's, it's better than having a thirty-foot road going to the end of nowhere. So I just wanted to state that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Are there any further questions?
Madam Chair, the only person is, I guess, Mrs. Scott's asking to speak again.
Okay, Mrs. Scott, welcome to speak again.
Okay, am I muted?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I just wanted to be clear. I wasn't asking for a thirty-foot wide road. I was asking that both driveways be condensed into one. That was all I was saying that, and I understand that you're all saying to keep it better in with the neighborhood. So that's why I'm saying it's one next to the other. Why couldn't it just be one? I wasn't looking for thirty feet. I don't want you to think that. I was just asking that one be centered. And that still gives the other property a buffer. And I think it's at twenty-five feet at that point. That, that was, I just wanted to be clear about that.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Are there any questions from the board? Okay, so.
I don't see anybody else, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So in the matter of two eighty A application. Osgood Place, I move that we close the hearing.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? The hearing is closed. And in the matter of the two eighty eight application approval for Osgood Place, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None? The motion is adopted. And in the matter of the two eighty eight application, Osgood Place, a move that we approve the performance bond estimate as recommended by the planning department.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? The motion is adopted. Thank you.
Hey, the next item on the agenda, let me just pull it up one second. The next item is a preliminary subdivision. That's a number eleven seventy map of Coffee Estates in Wisconsin. The applicant requests preliminary approval to subdivide a ten point two acre parcel into eighteen single family lots with three cul-de-sacs and a recharge basin. The preliminary subdivision number eleven seventy map of Coffee Estates is comprised of one tax lot. The property has approximately one thousand three hundred and eighty eight feet of road frontage on Southern Boulevard, approximately three hundred fourteen feet of road frontage on Town Line Road, and fifty feet of road frontage on Blackwell Road. The subdivision is located in the R ten and R fifteen zoning districts. Majority of the site is in R ten zoning. North of the subdivision is owned R fifteen with single family homes. I just lost my spot. West is east, uh, is owned R ten with single family homes. And south across Town Line Road is the town of Islip with single family homes. There are no existing structures on the property. The subdivision proposes to construct two cul-de-sacs, Young Court and Coffee Court, and extend Blackwell Road into three into a third cul-de-sac. Each cul-de-sac within the subdivision will provide access to six single family dwellings. All three cul-de-sacs are between two hundred feet and five hundred feet, which is required by the subdivision regulations. The southern portion of the subdivision will contain a one point two three acre recharge basin. Since the applicant is proposing a yield that is less than what is permitted by the zoning warrants, they're they're not subject to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. The topography of the site ranges from eighty eight feet above sea level to ninety eight feet above sea level. There are no environmentally sensitive lands on the property. All eighteen lots conform to the minimum lot area and frontage requirements of the R ten and R fifteen zoning district. The applicant is requesting a front yard setback and a side yard setback variance for lot one, since that lot is split zoned. The planning board has the authority to review these variances at final plat approval. The applicant is proposing to dedicate a fifteen foot wide strip of land along Southern Boulevard for road road widening purposes. Southern Boulevard's pavement will also be widened by approximately five to eight feet. The planning department recommends the applicant coordinate with the highway department before widening the road. Additionally, due to the pavement widening, the utility poles will need to be shifted to the east. The three cul-de-sacs propose a right of way radius of fifty feet and a pavement radius of forty feet. This is substandard in accordance with the subdivision regulations. However, the planning board has approved prior subdivisions with these dimensions, since they provide adequate access and turnaround space for large vehicles. Section two forty eight thirty one B of the subdivision regulations bars a subdivision be clustered because it is adjacent to a county highway. The planning department recommends this subdivision be clustered by placing a twenty foot wide conservation easement along Southern Boulevard. The conservation easement shall be as depicted on the tree preservation and land clearing plan dated July twenty third, two thousand twenty one. Pursuant to section two thirty nine N of general municipal law, the subdivision was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Suffolk County Planning Commission considers this application to be a matter of local determination and offers comments for the board's consideration. These comments are attached to this memo. The engineering department has reviewed the preliminary subdivision and has found it acceptable, subject to the comments in their mem- memorandums dated December twenty second, twenty twenty and August thirty first, twenty twenty. These are attached to this memo. The highway department has provided the following comments. One, the highway department would prefer not to have three cul-de-sacs in a small ten acre subdivision. Two, Blackwell Drive can be designed as a through street. And three, the cul-de-sacs are substandard in size. The traffic safety department has reviewed the subdivision and recommends traffic control items for the performance bond, which can be addressed at final plat approval. Department of Environment and Waterways, um, has reviewed the tree preservation and land clearing plan and has found it acceptable. They recommend a secret negative declaration. They also recommend conditions of approval related to land clearing and site preparation work that can be conditioned at the time of final plat approval. Uh, the planning department has reviewed the preliminary subdivision and has found it acceptable. The planning department recommends no access to Southern Boulevard for lots one, six, seven, twelve, thirteen, and eighteen. The following resolution is recommended by the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Whereas the planning board is considered the secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways and has indicated that any potential adverse environmental impact associated with said project does not rise to the level of significance, which would require a preparation of an environmental impact statement. Now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter. And finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to C C R. Second resolve that the planning board hereby issues a secret negative declaration determination of non-significance. An E I S is not necessary in the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Coffee Management LLC for number eleven seventy map of Coffee Estates for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not involve the destruction or physical modification of any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified and regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to contain any high groundwater conditions, poor soil properties, or unmanageable slopes, which would impose severe environmental development constraints upon the subject proposal. The revised tree preservation and land clearing plan submitted by the applicant dated July twenty third, two thousand twenty one increases the areas of the conservation easements and the number of trees to be preserved. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing along all limits of clearing and around any individual trees to be preserved within the clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director. And said fencing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. D, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. And E, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel incompatible with neighboring land uses. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Whereas the planning board is considered the request of Coffee Management LLC to subdivide ten point two acres into eighteen single family lots with three cul-de-sacs and a recharge basin. And therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby approves the preliminary subdivision number eleven seventy map of Coffee Estates, subject to the following conditions. One, the subdivision shall be clustered by placing a twenty foot conservation easement along Southern Boulevard in accordance with the tree preservation and land clearing plan dated July twenty third, two thousand twenty one. There two. Two, there shall be no access to Southern Boulevard for lots one, six, seven, twelve, thirteen, and eighteen. It shall be noted on the final map. Three, the applicant shall comply with the engineering department's comments in their memorandums dated December twenty second, two thousand twenty and August thirty first, two thousand twenty. The applicant and three, uh, excuse me, and second resolve that this preliminary approval shall be valid for a six month period to expire on April sixth, two thousand twenty two.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone representing the applicant who would like to speak on this matter? Please state name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, I'm trying to see.
And I'm I'm gonna guess Vinnie's five four three three four seven zero.
Yeah, that's what I'm guessing here.
Matt, this was the application that was reworked. I remember, I think they had it coming along the entire roadway and then they had this large buffer and then they had the individual like other street, bond of street.
Yeah, this was filed.
Oh, there we go.
It's Vincent Tramarko here. I've been unmuted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tramarko. Would you like to speak on this?
Yes, um, we've read over the recommendations of the, uh, planning department and asked the board, uh, to accept those, uh, recommendations. And, uh, move forward with the preliminary, uh, approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone else watching virtually who would like to speak on this matter?
Uh, Madam Chair, we have a, uh, Mike Squarzelli.
Okay, sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Mike Squarzelli. I live at fifteen Lawrence Drive, Wisconsin. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Uh, so I live, uh, on the street Lawrence Drive that, uh, directly, uh, lines up with the the lot, um, and I live directly across from the Blackwell Road where you're proposing, um, uh, Cortego, and I feel very strongly that this is a bad move, um. You know, this is a quiet neighborhood here. You're talking about increased traffic, uh, construction that's gonna last years. Um, you're talking about, uh, taking out, um, a lar- large amounts of trees that it helped to keep the the noise levels down from Southern Boulevard. Um, you know, this is a a quiet, close knit neighborhood and you're talking about expanding it for, um, you you know, a clearly profit motive. You know, I I don't, I don't see the purpose of building this this property, uh, on this land. Um, and I think, uh, that it's, it is a mistake that would be irreversible to our community.
Thank you, sir. Are there any, is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Hold on, let me get out of the share screen so you can see.
Uh, there's a Sergia Coffey. I'll ask on mute.
Hello, I'd like to point down to Mr. Skrel- Skarelzeli or Skarelzy. My family has owned that property.
Can you just say your name and?
Hi, my name is Sergey Coffey. I live at, uh, upstate New York, ten Catskill Way. My grandparents bought that property in the early nineteen hundreds. I understand Mrs. Skarelli has, uh, Skarezelli has built his house behind that property. But, uh, you know, why would he think that that property would never be developed, number one? Number two, when we brought this to the community and we put, uh, we sent out letters to the community years ago, when we first started this plan, the community overwhelmingly preferred that type of development to a bunch of apartment buildings, which was the alternative that was being proposed. So I think this is gonna be a beautiful neighborhood of Mr. Skarezelli. I think it's gonna be as nice as your homes, and I think your neighbors are gonna be wonderful. And, you know, it's gonna be just as quiet. Yes, there's gonna be some period of building, but that is inevitable if we were gonna sell the land. So I hope, I hope you can see it in that manner.
In all due respect, ma'am, um, you know, you you don't live in this community, so.
Please state your name and address for the record if you'd like.
Hello?
Hello, let's talk to the board, not to each other, please.
Yeah, you guys gotta address.
Please state your name and address for the record and and, uh, and address the board.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mi- Mike, you already spoke. This is a public hearing. You addressed the board. You had your chance. Sergia, there are chances. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? And if the board wants to allow people to s- speak a second time, they can do that, but this is not a back and forth. It's not a debate. It's a public hearing. You make your comments and that's it.
And the way to, I know there's some, you know, people's concerns like regarding traffic, it's, it's, you know, it's eighteen homes. But the way this is set up, it's meted in in a, a nice pattern, because you have six coming out on one way, and then you have the other six that are spaced apart coming out on the other side. So you don't have eighteen homes all dumping out in one particular area.
Okay.
I can respond to that, but I guess I'm not allowed.
You can just let, we have to let everybody else speak first.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this matter?
Uh, Chair, I'm not seeing any other hands up.
Okay.
Russell Galata has their hands up.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Hold on, you gotta unmute them and then they gotta, there you go. You guys are unmuted.
Okay.
Hi, hi, I'm Patricia Craigan. I live at twenty four Lawrence Drive. I back right up against the woods. I met Mrs. Coffey, uh, fifty years ago when our Parkway Woods development was developed here. And, um, that spring, we moved in in December. That spring in May, when the rain started, all of a sudden my backyard became a lake. The way the property of Mrs. Coffey's Estates is higher. The grade is higher than my backyard. And I understand that you're probably gonna try and grade it so everything goes to the sump. But I'm a little concerned that we're further up. Um, that the water is going to land in my backyard again and possibly flood my basement. Uh, there's a number of homes here, three of us, four of us in a row, that are lower than the woods behind us. So I'm concerned that, uh, this is really going to be looked into, so we don't have any problems. And the only other thing too is all the animals and mice and whatever in the woods, and there going to be something done so that they don't start invading us as the land is being ripped up.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to be heard in this matter?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, it's Vincent Tramarko. Um, should I wait for, uh, the gentleman on, uh, Lawrence to speak? Before I comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you wanna? No, you can. You wanna ask, uh, do you wanna let Mr. Squarzelli speak again?
Yes.
Yes.
There you go, Mike.
Yes, sir. Would you like to speak again? Please state your name and address for the record again, please.
Again, uh, my name is Mike Squarzelli. I'm at fifteen Lawrence Drive. Um, I was gonna say before that, uh, you know, I I understand Ms. Coffey's point that, um, you know, I agree it would be better to have homes there than apartments. But i- it doesn't change the fact that, you know, the the more we develop in our community, the the more it changes our community. And what we like about Smithtown is that it's not Nassau County. Um, and I'm sure being upstate and not a part of this community, she could appreciate that, you know, she, you know, why we wouldn't wanna a place that to live in a place that's overdeveloped. And, um, to the person who spoke before about saying that the way that the property is going to be, uh, laid out to, um, decrease traffic. I mean, if you're adding eighteen homes to to the town, that's gonna be another eighteen, eighteen, uh, eighteen homes that are added that are just adding traffic to to our town. And and we continue to develop our our our, uh, our town where, you know, you just put in building, um, homes over on one eleven and and three forty seven. I mean, it's like every time I turn around, i- it's more development, uh, right down the road, um, on Old Nichols. I don't think it's Smithtown property, but they're, uh, building, uh, uh, apartment buildings down there. Um, you know, it's the more you you continue to continue to develop, the the less we lose of our community. And, uh, you know, it is, it is really a shame and there's no going back. Um, and I hope this planning board can really appreciate that and take these things into consideration before they make these decisions. Um, you know, I listened for an hour of an entire neighborhood complaining that they don't want a driveway put in. And to be quite honest, it seemed like you guys pretty much just blew them off entirely. So, um, you know, I I hope that you are taking m- my perspective in into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tramarko, did you, would you like to speak?
Yeah, just for a moment, Madam Chair. Um, as, um, uh, Mrs. Coffey indicated a while ago, the the original proposal, forget about apartments, which are not, uh, permitted. There was, um, uh, talk about doing apartments, but that would have required a change of zone. And, um, for one, uh, the Coffeys didn't wanna, uh, do anything like that. And they wanted to maintain it as residential. And the second thing, uh, you might remember, the first proposal, uh, which, um, uh, came out of a different planning department with a different director, um, showed like a, um, I it's hard to describe, a half circle with houses all the way around it. And if you wanna talk about what it looked like, it really did look like a Queens development. So, we tried to put our heads together and, and come up with something, uh, that is truly, uh, residential in character. And, uh, to speak to, uh, the last gentleman who lives on Lawrence Road, the highway department, uh, wanted initially, and they still make that recommendation to run from Lawrence Drive, I believe it's Blackwell Road, straight through to Southern Boulevard. That certainly would have created a real traffic problem, and it would have become a cut-through. So we decided to do three cul-de-sacs, one, um, ending up on, uh, the road ending up on Lawrence Road, and, and two other cul-de-sacs, which substantially, um, uh, mitigates, uh, traffic, uh, coming out on, on, uh, Southern Boulevard. And also to speak to the drainage issue, as the planning board well knows, um, the engineering department will scrutinize this map to make sure that all of the water stays on our property and is directed either by, um, uh, catch basins, or in this case, there is a, a, a sump which will direct all the water to that sump. We are not allowed and would not be permitted uh, to have water, um, flowing on anybody else's property. That's very strictly enforced by Smithtown Engineering. So, we asked the board for its favorable consideration. We think this is the best uh, map that could have been, uh, supplied and proposed to the, uh, uh, planning board. As you can see, it was clustered. Uh, we left, um, some areas of, um, of, uh, of forestation on, um, Smith, on Townline Road. And we put a sump in, which will also, um, uh, be a, a mitigation from, uh, uh, the traffic on, on Townline Road. So again, we ask for the board's favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tramarko. Are there any questions from the board?
I have one for the gentleman that lives on Lawrence. He has to remember that the people have the right to develop their property, and it's our job to protect their rights also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markazi. All right, uh, in the matter of number eleven seventy map of Coffee Estates, a move that we close the hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? The hearing is closed. In the matter of number eleven seventy map of Coffee Estates, a move that we adopt the secret negative declaration as recommended by the planning department.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? The motion is adopted. And in the matter of subdivision preliminary approval, number eleven seventy map of Coffee Estates, a move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted. Thank you.
Standing board.
Thank you.
The next item is the minutes from the September eighth.
Yeah, I moved, I moved that we adopt the September eighth, two thousand twenty-one minutes of the planning board.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is adopted. And I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.